Okay, ladies and gentlemen in Internet, this is a, we'll entertain a motion that we open the meeting of the planning board for Monday, August 1st, 2022.
I'll second it.
Well, moved and seconded, okay?
So moved.
So moved?
So moved.
In favor?
Yes.
Yes, aye.
It's open, okay. The first item on our agenda tonight is 71 Hill Street. And Council McGann is here. I believe the public hearing is still open.
Yes.
Okay.
The public hearing is still...
What may we do with this, with this application tonight?
We could close the hearing. That would be great.
That's all we have to do, right?
That's, that's about all you have to do, yes. I think the engineers were going back and forth about some very, very technical stuff, but I think there's nothing outstanding that in any way is going to change the basic plan, and we could close the hearing if you will.
Yeah, okay. There were trivial, what I view as trivial items, still badgering about having to do with the radiant way and parking in a tree and the fire department and stuff like that.
Kathy? We are ironing out the details, yes, but it's, it's down to, you know, is this light going one foot here or one foot there? It's, it's, it's down to, I think, very, very minute matters that have nothing to do, that, that are, that are almost more code than, more than site plan.
Right. I wanted to make sure that none of the changes that the engineer is going to make, we're going to change the dimensioning on the site, the actual site layout, before I recommended closing the public hearing. I also met with Dean McNamara today, the Fire Marshal with Alex, and we concluded that none of those details would change the site layout plan. So at this point, it makes sense for the board to close the public hearing. Nothing that is going to change on the site plan would affect, you know, public input at this point.
So for procedure, we close the public hearing, I believe, Council, and, but sign off on it when these details are believed to be determined.
Yes, it would go back on the work session agenda.
Okay, and this is both of, I recollect, we've now changed our schedule, this is both a work session and a public meeting. So to close the hearing is part of the public meeting action that we take?
Yes, so we can, we can make that motion now if the board's ready.
Okay. Well, do you have any, you were, you were, you and I were concerned that there'd be some procedure which you said was being developed with respect to the workforce housing section.
Yes, I've been in touch with the Board of Trustees, and been in touch with, we've had some exchanges behind the scenes, and I'm waiting for a resolution, which I hope will come very shortly.
Okay. So that would be with the mechanical details will await to our closing, the planning board's involvement with this application.
So we'll, we'll be able to see that agreement that'll be submitted to this board as well?
Well, I don't, I don't really know. That'll be up to the Board of Trustees, I mean...
Yeah, that's just a procedural question that I have as to, maybe Alice can answer that or Kathy's.
I mean, I think it's really up to them.
Yeah, at this point, I don't have an answer.
Okay.
You know, we were concerned about the mechanics and the oversight of the workforce housing, but we did determine that it would be, that the Board of Trustees need to make that decision.
The, the only issue they have in front of them is the administration, the protocols for how that workforce housing is going to be rented to whom and under what circumstances, and we are, we are working on that.
Well, we share that, so, subject to those broad caveats of completion, I'll make the motion that this board vote to close the public hearing on 2173, which is the 71 Hill Street application. It's seconded.
I'll second.
It's been seconded. We'll take a vote, which we can record, it's four of us voting.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an extension request, but I don't, I didn't get to the, with the other things, the board, I don't know, why is, why is the line being changed? Alice, what was this?
So this application predates my time representing the board, but this was a lot line modification for Fernandez and 41 Warthorne Street.
Right.
L.L.C. and 65 Captain's Neck and 41 Warthorne Street. There's a pretty lengthy letter from the applicant's counsel in the file.
Yep.
It sounds like they're pretty jammed up with the Health Department trying to get approval of the lot line modification, and given some of the detail in this letter, I can tell you, I've been down this road with trying to get mortgaging consents for covenants with the Health Department. It is, it is a difficult enough and lengthy process, so if the board is amenable, I think that the extension is appropriate.
So, but the, the difficulty lies with the county water board.
The Health Department, yeah, the Health Department has to also approve the lot line modification.
Right, okay. And that we all understand, other administrations, so I believe we ought to vote to extend it, because it has been going on for a long time.
It has.
So again, if you want me to make the motion, I will, that we grant an extension, and they want to do it, I think, until this...
January, January 2023.
Till the, till next January. Does that sound reasonable, Council? Given to January?
Yep, it sounds reasonable to me.
Okay. Vote?
Yeah. I, I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Well says yes?
Aye. Aye. Are we having a vote?
Yes.
Yes, aye.
Aye, four votes in favor, okay.
Who seconded?
What?
No one did.
I don't think so.
No, no one did, that's why I said, are we having a vote?
All seconded.
Oh, well, seconded.
All seconded.
It's been duly processed, okay.
Thank you.
So that, that's, we know that property. All right, 550, 554 Hill Street is September. The review continues, I don't think we need, Council, we don't need to vote on that for a minute, just to continue?
How much is done on that application?
It's been adjourned.
It's been adjourned, so there's nothing formal to do on that, okay. We have another application, which is 51 Pond Lane, and a request to next Monday?
Two Mondays.
Two Mondays, two Mondays, the 15th. And I will walk out of the dinner with my brothers and five guests, and I'll be here.
Okay.
I've been working on this one for eight or nine years, well, 13 years, one way or the other. Okay. The next item on our agenda...
I think this is a current request for an adjournment, so we should vote on it.
We should vote on that?
Yep.
An extension? Okay, then, if this is, they're usually done by mutual agreement between the applicant and this board, we will...
This is a, like, this adjournment request is a present request, it wasn't already adjourned, so if we could just make a motion to accept the applicant's request for the adjournment?
Okay. So moved, as stated by Council, we will request the applicant's request, and there's always a question as to who the applicant is between the town and the village, and who's advising him and all that stuff, but we'll accept the extension. If somebody seconds it, then we vote yes.
I'll second.
Been seconded by Lisa, in favor?
Aye.
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 Four ayes. Thank you. Okay, Heart of the Hamptons is our next item, 2180. Public hearing is closed, and I know that there's still items, so, Council, anything that we, for the board tonight, is a work session or otherwise that we need to take action on?
Yeah, I, I don't think there's anything outstanding from our end.
Okay, we, we have had before us a list of, of conditions proposed, I believe, that Council has constructed, have you circulated those to the parties?
So they've been circulated to the board members. I haven't seen them, but...
Okay, well, we can, this...
They're, they're for discussion, they are...
Okay, by way of work session, we can discuss them in front of you now, which is a series of ideas that have come up, which, which have been put up by the applicant verbally in various forms, you know, how you're going to run the show for now and everything else, and what items of material change ought to come back, among other things, for approval by this board, whoever's on it, and future dates, so, would anyone here like to, I thought they were, personally, I read them all, and I thought they were all absolutely reasonable, but they should be distributed to Council and to the...
Does somebody have a copy that I can review?
Board and everything else? But what do you want to do? Alice, what do you want to do? Do you want to do?
I, I think, I think that we should go through them, and I think the board should discuss them, because the board might have some feedback on making some more particular, perhaps making some less particular, and perhaps adding or subtracting some, so I think we should go through them. I know it's a little lengthy, but I think we should take the time to go through them. Maybe Kathy and I could take turns reading them.
I'll start with the first one.
Okay.
So the first one, I'm going to paraphrase, basically says that the food pantry will conform to the approved site plan, so it will build and naturally do exactly what says on the site plan. And it lists the date as being last revised July 15th, 2022, and any deviations from that would have to come back to the planning board. See, that, I mean, that's a standard, a standard.
Seems reasonable.
And we're assuming, you know, you've got the zoning board, you're going to the dormers and one side or the other and everything, everything else, so we're, we're assuming it's proceeding with other boards the year before, as we've heard.
Oh, yeah. I think we have to add a condition, sorry, Alex.
I'll do the next one then.
Well, oh, just on that one, can we add language that whatever conditions that the site plan should reflect, whatever conditions we're imposing today, if those are actual physical changes?
Does the, does the condition would actually be transcribed onto the site plan?
I don't think that's typical. I, I think that what typically happens is there is a written determination with the conditions attached, and you vote on the determination with the conditions, and it's a, it's a condition.
Yeah.
That's the way it usually works.
It'd be formalized, Council will help us formalize them in a suitable fashion.
Just, my concern there was just if the site plan conflicts with any conditions that we impose, then that would create some uncertainty. Or we don't know, you don't know which conditions we're going to impose, that some of them are, you know, that, for example, a, a remote, something for the outdoor freezer.
Why don't, why don't we, before we...
Yeah, let's go through it. Yeah, it's just, those are physical plans, I would want to see that on the site plan, if we're referencing the site plan is controlling, that's, that's my only point.
So, the, the next one is that the operation of the facility shall comply with the provisions of the license agreement for the use of the premises between the Village and the Heart of the Hamptons. I thought there might be some discussion about that one, but it's a fairly, fairly obvious condition.
Yeah, we're, the planning board is throwing the ball back to the trustees who made the whole decision anyway, in my view.
So the third one is that the compressor for the outdoor walk-in fridge slash freezer depicted on the issue of site plan shall be located inside building.
The compressor, yes.
The compressor.
Yep.
Yeah.
No cooking or similar food preparation shall occur on site.
Except for food storage and the walk-in freezer slash fridge slash freezer, outdoor storage or outdoor display shall not occur on the premises. For a display, a player.
I mean, it's a little vague.
We're going to, we'll get you, if you need, if you need, for mutual protection, you will sharpen these with Council's advice before they become formal conditions, but this is, I think, a reasonable proposal, is to deal with what's inside and what, what's outside.
Can I, is this, okay, is this people here or...
Yeah, sure, this is, this is a work, work session, we're not doing anything formal on this, on this one.
The only thing, you know, when we were operating the drive-through, we would bring a certain amount out with us, and then restock it, you know, but I'm saying, like how we did on the video.
That's not storage or display.
It's not storage, and it's not really display.
No.
I think storage implies a length of time.
Okay, the only thing one of our board members did ask is, currently, there's a slab in the back that the ambulance barn used to have a little shed on.
Yep.
If we ever did want to have a little shed on that same slab, would we come back and ask for that?
You would, you would need to amend your site plan.
Yeah, okay, but, I mean, it's not that we maybe couldn't ask for that later, if we...
No, I need, I agree. You want to amend your site plan.
Yeah, okay, so that would be, we don't, we're not looking for it now, but it was just like in the future, could we ask for that?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we're okay with that one, too.
Oh, next one. The pickup of groceries from the facility by client shall occur at the easterly end of the parking lot for the, for the First Presbyterian Church of Southampton.
Right? That's what we all think?
Good?
Yep.
The hours of grocery pickups by clients of the facility shall be limited to, this is where we're, put in three days per week, and a total of approximately nine hours per week. Client pickup shall not occur before 7:00 a.m. or after 6:00 p.m., or any time on Saturday or Sunday.
Okay. Thank you.
Clients of the facility arriving to pick up groceries shall follow the usual pattern of vehicle movement and park along the easterly edge of the church parking lot so as to not interfere with the circulation of other vehicles in the parking lot. And I think, well, I think this is an instance where, you know, that we do have the site plan and the diagram, and it is consistent.
And they're not even really parking, right? They're not even getting out of their car.
Well, they're waiting.
Right, but they're not parking.
No.
Parking, parking, you turn your car off.
They're putting their cars in park, presumably.
Some of these guys may have Teslas. Price is coming down.
Okay, we're, we're more than happily done.
Aye.
Okay. Heart of the Hamptons shall provide sufficient staff and volunteers stationed in the church parking lot during all times of grocery pickups by clients of the facility to ensure safe and efficient operation. Every reasonable effort shall be made to limit the queue length for clients awaiting grocery deliveries to no more than three vehicles.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. That's a board.
Loading trucks, loading from trucks making deliveries to the facility shall occur from the easterly end of the church parking lot. Delivery truck shall follow the usual pattern of vehicle movement and park along the easterly edge of the church parking lot so as to not interfere with the circulation of other vehicles in the parking lot.
Okay.
Trucks making deliveries to, to the facility shall operate in strict compliance with applicable regulations regarding engine idling.
Wait, I think you missed 11.
All right, I mean, said, Alice said to do 11, sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I assume no one has any objection to the idling?
No, idling would help, other objections.
I have a question, what are the provisions as far as idling?
So, there are some county provisions regarding idling, and I believe there are some state ones as well, so we don't want to have anything that's conflicting with those provisions, and, you know, the truck drivers know them, so they're enforceable in that sense. The next one, number 11, is truck deliveries to the facility shall not occur at the same time as client grocery pickups in the church parking lot.
Okay, down to 13. Truck delivery shall occur in a manner that avoids the activation of backup heaters.
Tractor trailer truck shall not be used to make deliveries to the facility.
The foregoing requirements for grocery pickup and truck delivery shall not preclude occasional grocery pickups on the premises or on-site deliveries via passive cars and similar small vehicles.
Thank you.
You got the long one, sorry.
It's okay, I got my special microphone. If in the future there is a termination of the lease from the First Presbyterian Church to Southampton Village for use of the parking lot for public parking, to continue operations, the facility shall obtain a lease agreement directly from the First Presbyterian Church for facility operations and provide a copy of the same to the planning board file if, oh, that needs revision. If the lease is terminated and the applicant is unable to obtain a lease directly from the First Presbyterian Church for the use of the parking lot, the site plan shall be deemed invalid.
Yeah, this is something that I had some questions about, because at the moment, there's not an agreement between the church and the Heart of the Hamptons to be able to use the spots.
Could it contract?
I mean, other than the verbal representation, but we're asking...
Well, no, they, they put in a letter, we got a letter from the trustees of the church, and there is a lease to the village for public use, and the village is allowing Heart of the Hamptons to use the parking lot.
I'm just thinking down the road, because they're able to, in, in that lease, it says if they're having a church event or other things, they can preclude anyone from using the lot for that, those hours and times, so I wonder if we can have like a letter agreement from the church to put in writing, because that's one of the things that the neighbors had asked for, as to, like, that they'll allow the operations to continue in all circumstances.
So they, candidly, they don't want to have something that also handicaps them when they renegotiate the lease with the village, it's a tricky spot for them. They have said that they would extend the lease to us if, for any reason, the negotiations with the village to renew the lease, it doesn't, doesn't work for either party, but also, I know, in talking to the church trustees and talking to Tom Edmonds from the Historical Museum, they're in the exact same situation, and they say, we have a funeral on Wednesday, and Tom says, okay, no problem, like, we won't use this, and it would be the same thing for us, I mean, we've certainly had to deal with situations like that where we are now, where there's like a last minute funeral, or a wedding, or, you know, something that comes up, and we accommodated, or adjust, or, you know, have to, you know, even if it's like around the holiday, we have to close, but for the most part, too, the church has said that it's really just Sunday mornings, and we wouldn't be operating at all on Sunday mornings, when they, and they don't even close the parking lot completely, they, they put cones out and close about half of it, and they leave the other half still open, like, the half closest to our building actually stays open still for public parking and anybody that's coming to the Historical Museum, so I think that...
I just, I feel like we're relying on something, you know, it should, it should be in writing, because the administration and the village doesn't stay the same, the church doesn't stay the same, the former church, you know, didn't want the pan, you know, didn't want the food pantry to be any, things change in other ways.
But I think that the, the provision basically says that, that if things change, then we are starting back at zero with you guys. If, if, if something happens with the church, or something happens with the village, where we no longer have the support of either entity to use that parking lot, then we have to come back to the planning board and start over. So I think that this provision covers any possible change in leadership at either place.
If it does...
That's not my impression of what it does.
If it does, it's satisfactory, okay, but let us look at it together closely, just so, well, I'm, with, you know, if the Chinese and the Russians in the U.S. can't get together, it's complicated. If you and the trustees and Tom Edmonds, the four people can't get together, it gets complicated. We don't care, except we get asked to be referees.
I, I understand, but I think also, too, there's a long history of...
Decades.
Decades of, of using that parking lot by multiple entities, and everybody just...
NATO will run it, run it, we just, we are going to be asked to have a seat at the table, so this needs to be worded.
I understand, but I think that you do...
Changes come to us.
You know, this is not, this is a scary proposition for us also, to have to start back at zero if anything changes, and I, but I do think that the wording that you have come up with for this provision does cover any change.
Okay, if the wording, if the wording's satisfactory, it'll go into what you, it'll circulate everybody to pray.
Why don't they want to, I don't understand why they don't want to put it in writing if they're agreeing, yeah.
If they give us a lease, though, if they give us, well, first of all, they can't give us a lease, because they've, they've already given a lease, and so they can't have two leases operating. If they say that we could use the parking lot in perpetuity forever, you know, but then it's also like, does the village have to rent it to make it public parking, or would they just rent it to us?
Well, if they just say they won't exercise that provision of the lease against Heart of Hamptons to, in any way that would interfere with their operations, or they would work with them to change the schedule, or whatever it is, because the plan is relying on the church parking lot being available, so there's ways to come up, yeah.
And they said, they submitted a letter that they had to vote on from their trustees that says they welcome us using the parking lot and wish us all the best in this process moving forward.
It's just a great letter.
I understand, but that's just, that's a different from an enforceable thing, I'm looking at an enforceable thing, yeah.
I think we can add to this, that either, if either the lease is terminated between the church and the village, or if the church says that for some reason the village cannot sublease...
The village cannot...
Or give license to Heart of the Hamptons for use of the lot, then either Heart of the Hamptons has to get their own lease agreement, or the site plan is invalid. I think we can add that to the provision.
Got to deal with the circle. NATO may have new members, that's what happens. Okay, we got, there's that one, is that, is that the last one?
Next one.
Number 17.
The applicant has indicated that the dumpster is generally to be, generally used for packaging and office waste, however, any incidental food waste shall be deposited in sealed plastic bags. So this is when a jar of tomatoes falls and you have to clean it up, and we just want to make sure it's in a sealed plastic bag.
Oh, and they need airbag.
And then the last one is any substantive changes foregoing, conditions shall require approval by the planning board, so that's, that's standard language as well.
Okay, so for the work session, we, this is accumulation of stuff that's come into us, we'll get it circled, buttoned up properly, circulated for you for approval, so the next two weeks, we can, if that's satisfactory.
Yeah, the next, the next meeting is like two weeks.
15, yeah.
15.
Yeah, okay.
Monday, the 15th.
Okay, fine, adjourned 15.
Okay, any other matters? Alex, we're happy?
I think that sounds reasonable.
Okay.
If we have the language for that, we might consider to try towards the testers at the legislature.
Yeah, duration, it's a 30-year lease.
It seems like a couple of years.
It's a 30-year lease, and the Presbyterian Church, I understand, is in as much flux as every other church I know, so.
The first Presbyterian Church in New York State.
They may move. Okay. The next, thank you. The next item on our agenda is 36 Windmill Lane, application 2190, also known as Shippeys, for at least my lifetime. And we'd love a, a discussion, I gather, prompt action is, is of the essence, so, who's here to talk to us about it, so we can...
Do a very brief interview?
Yep, yep, there were, there were issues, a lot of issues were, well, it's fine, a lot of issues were resolved, we understand, like outdoor dining and stuff like that, there are proposals to what's going on inside, which is total change without any outcome that can be identified, a lot of change, but it'll be exactly the same.
Please, I'll take you through all that.
We've got the plot, okay, so, bring us up to date, please.
Well, good evening, planning board members.
Who are you? Who are you? May we know for the record, who are you?
Oh.
And why are you here?
You want me to, okay, I'm John Betts.
Good, so you're the, you're the proposer.
I'm the, well, I'm the purchaser of the restaurant.
Okay.
We live down North Sea over 100 years, I'm thrilled to be here, because this is to the community a very important project.
Hey.
It's a, it's a revitalization of an iconic South Atlantic institution, been doing business for over 68 years, and I can tell you that we've gotten lots of feedback since the beginning of the year in terms of how we should approach things, and so...
And menu items to keep?
And menu items, we put a survey in the paper, I'll be on, I got Lisa looking at me, she's in charge. But the amount of feedback clearly shows how special Shippeys is to people, and what it means to them, and so Lisa will take you through our plans, and she's done a really great job with the tough proposition. We want to preserve and recognize the specialness of Shippeys, do some revitalization to allow us to be around for the next 100 years.
Okay.
And balancing the historical significance is something she's done a brilliant job. I'll leave it there. Good use, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for your time today.
Lisa Saloga, I'm the architect. We gave him a timeline.
That's okay, that's okay. We're on, this is a work session, ma'am.
I know, I know.
If you want to do this all at once, which is angry-
Yes, that is our goal.
We'll deal with you if we can.
That is our hope, that it's an interior renovation, and our hope is that you can waive the public hearing and perhaps vote on it tonight, so that we can move forward with our first phase of the interior renovation. And there's no increase in occupancy, it's purely interior changes. I think if you look at the plans, you can see the bar pretty much stays in the same location at the moment. It's really updating, and-
So the bar's on the south wall. Is it longer or shorter?
I think at the moment, it's still the same length. In the future, we may, we may want to go back-
It's a lot of bar.
It's a good bar.
I think it would be great if we could share a plan.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I understand.
I can, do you want me, do you have it, or do you want me to put it on the table? I didn't know if you were doing that.
I think on the table would be great.
Be good, for the record. It helps us do this other than just on prayer.
The wing of the prayer. So we have the existing floor plan, and then we have the proposed floor plan. So you can see the banquettes that are along the south wall there. Most of them stay, the ones that are up front, kind of on the west end, disappear and become booths, or, well, they become a banquet with seats. And then we end up with some U-shaped seating areas where the existing kind of four-persons rectilinear ones were. The bar stays in the same color.
So the central, I'll call it the central bar sort of wall stays the same, it's not, it's not doing something imaginative like moving 4.2 inches or something, is it all-
Which wall, which?
There's a central bar that separates the restaurant.
From the, like, the wall that was there?
The bar and the tables. Staying right where it is?
It might have moved 4.2 inches. I'd have to, I'd have to double check that, but it's very similar to exactly where it is.
We're going to get questions like that to us, how could you people have done this? Come on, we're defending the motion before this particular group of judges.
It'll be very close to exactly where it is. It's the same general configuration with a little bit of upgrading.
Yeah, we love the upgrading. I'm pretty sure I'll be asked after, whatever it's, my 58 years of getting there, are the pictures changing?
The pictures might be changed, but there will, there will definitely be some historic pictures of Shippies back on those walls.
Oh, that's right, but there are two old pictures there that have significance to some of the-
I believe that those might be auctioned off.
It's okay, that's, that is not, I think, in our jurisdiction either, but it will come up in terms of change.
They might be auctioned off. And you could even go home maybe with a booth from Shippies if you wanted to.
That's not our line of work, okay. Any, will be asked things like material changes, and by material, it's a really important word, in things like lighting, or, the door stays the same, and it's going to be the same-
The front door stays the same. The, you know, right now, I don't, I mean, I'm sure you've all been there, you know, they have kind of the, the front area right in front of those windows was raised up and kind of almost a display cases, and we're going to, we're going to lower that back down to floor and have people be able to sit kind of in those windows. So that would be a change that you would notice. And the lighting, we're going to put in a fire sprinkler system so that it will become safe, and those kinds of things.
Okay. Well, any questions? You've probably been there some of the time. Are you worried?
I'm not worried.
Okay.
No, I'm confident it's going to be-
Lisa, any concerns?
None.
Danny, you've been there longer than I have, though.
Well, are we cleaning the kitchen?
The kitchen will be immaculate.
Kitchen's out back, it's out back, it's out where the bicycles are. It's a bicycle kitchen.
Kitchen will be immaculate.
Okay, so the kitchen stay, is redone out back?
Kitchen is redone in its, in its same location, but it's redone, all new, all new equipment.
Well, that's fine, no, that's, that's fine with me. We'll judge whether it's redone properly or not in the future, but that we understand. Okay. So you would like us to approve this renovation without going to the hearing motion?
I would be extremely happy if you could approve this tonight, yes, so that we could move forward.
Counsel, should we take two motions to terminate a hearing we're not have, not to have a hearing, and then to approve the proposal?
I believe the resolution has, though, leaving the public hearing within the resolution, so you can vote to adopt the resolution tonight.
Then this is an application before us for site plan approval of 36 Windmill Lane, number 2190. And there's a full set of wheres that end. Then we approve the interior renovations tonight, and I will move our approval, which includes the whereas, which is the last one, a public hearing is considered to be unnecessary in the resolution, so I'll make that motion. Second the motion?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Well, it says she seconds it. Lisa, in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's approved. This will be signed.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck, whoever the contractor is. I hope they're free and able. Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys.
Okay. That is the end of our scheduled agenda tonight. We have future meetings down for the 15th, the Tuesday after Labor Day, and Monday the 19th. No minutes up tonight, I don't think, okay? So we can proceed. Thank you for the work on this, Alex. I got it, as they say in the Pentagon, they let you, with your doing it for the building department, they got to lift their leg over this one, this is okay. I assume it's, for the kitchen and everything else, it's satisfactory with the fire department and all that sort of stuff.
I'm sure you have the fire marshal and building inspector will take a look.
Okay, okay. So I will, I will sign this one, it'll go in. Anyone want to move that the meeting be adjourned?
I'll move that the meeting be adjourned.
Close.
Second.
Close.
Closing the meeting. Closed?
Oh, yeah, not adjourned, closed, the meeting be closed, sorry.
Closed.
Closed, sorry, I did that wrong. Okay?
I'll second that.
Thank you all for your time.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.